Good evening. This is the March 16th meeting of the Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees, and we are meeting for our regular monthly meeting. We're going to introduce ourselves to folks who might be paying, listening. We'll start with.
Megan Griffin-Adams.
Denise O'Reilly.
Jennifer McCoury.
Melissa Bowie.
Judy. We have Judy Maranucci. And we also have with us Brett.
Brett Halli.
And those are the trustees. And joining us this evening are Linda Cole. If you could, Gail McKay, who is our secretary, and Kim Catalino. Catalino, I'm sorry, I'm not, I have not, I should have practiced saying your name. And Bunny Brinkman, the library director, is with us. And due to technical difficulties, she is not on camera, but she is here, and we will hear from her. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Barbara, there is a revision to the minutes.
Okay.
Rachel sent me an email. I had gotten some of the, in the personnel section of last month's minutes. She wants them, she clarified that it said at the February meeting, the Personnel Committee planned to discuss revisions to the employee satisfaction survey to prepare it for distribution to the staff. The revised survey will be discussed or voted on at the March meeting. So I'm going to modify the minutes from February to reflect the exact event.
And will you send out a revised copy then, Gail?
Yes, I will. And I'll also post the revisions to drop off.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Based on that, would you like to amend your motion to approve the minutes as revised?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Denise. All in favor, please raise your right hand or left hand. Thank you. Motion is carried. We have Niraj, who is our finance officer, is not here this evening, but he prepared in advance a finance report discussing the balance sheet and made some points that he thought we should discuss. He did not have anything to say about the monthly balance sheet other than it looked good. But the gift to memorial fund, we have a policy that is approved that says that this fund should remain at $140,000 or greater. And he's calling our attention to that. And that's something that will become pertinent as we move on into our discussion this evening. The budget number, he said is, he said the percentage of spending is a good number, and the actual expenses are in good shape. And he, we have a CD that's maturing on March 26th, and he and I will go make the signatures on that. And we also sent a check to Sign Language for the first half of the payment for the new sign in front of the library. And that was enough to get them to start work on it. And we're looking forward to seeing that up, and the balance will be due when the sign is completed. And then we also have an estimate that Gail sent out, and it is part of what we got. There is another cost. We wanted to have the existing library sign taken down so we can put it inside the building, whether it's inside the library or in the hallway, we're not sure of the location yet. But it has been outside. It is the original sign from the Penfield Public Library that used to be in the old house on Five Mile Line Road. And after several or many years outdoors, the gold on the letters has become kind of spald and tacky and peeling away. And so we have an estimate for having those letters repaired and regilded, and also for putting up a sign with our new logo over the book drop in place of the sign that says "Library." And that is in your packet of materials from Gail, and we should probably vote on. The one cost is $395, and then the single-sided sign is $260. So together, that is $655 plus tax. So we will need a motion to go ahead and be able to pay for that.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Denise. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Melissa. All in favor of spending the $655 plus tax for the signs as described, please raise your hand. As always, we welcome public participation. Because of COVID, we ask that people write to us with their comments at PPLTrustees@yahoo.com. I have, I checked this afternoon, and so far, no one has written to us. At least anybody, I mean, we've gotten some ads on that email, but we have not gotten anybody who has written in any comments, so. But we'll keep looking, and if you have some, please, please let us know, and we'd be happy to hear from you. As far as communications, we received an invitation to an event that the Penfield Public Library Foundation is having. And if people are able to go and are interested, I think that would be a great thing to do to support them and their work.
It is virtual.
It is virtual.
It is.
It's a virtual wine tasting. And I, I just, I, I think that they are, like everyone else, they're trying to be creative at a time when it's very difficult to gather and, and difficult to try to come up with different and unusual things. And I think that they have come up with an interesting idea. So I'm encouraging all of us to support it however we can. Linda, would you like to give your report?
Well, there's not a lot to report on. I mean, we're meeting every week at the town board, and we have a legislative session tomorrow night. We only have a couple of things on the agenda, one being South Bay Restaurant, there you want to have outdoor music, and someone wants to start an insurance office in the four corners. But, you know, we, I know the town staff's been working hard on trying to get the Clark House back up to speed in order to be able to lease it to anyone. And, you know, if you have any questions about tapping, maybe I could answer them or get back to you on them. That's, that's all really, I know, so, you know, everything's just kind of running, running well. There hasn't been any big issues or anything. But just like everything else, we're still meeting on Zoom. But, you know, the town board, Tony, Tony's sitting where Barbara is. I mean, he's done that from the get-go. There's been a few people there at the town hall, but the majority of us have stayed back here in our homes. And probably will do so until we get the okay to, you know, from the governor to not have to, you know, be as, be as careful as we've been. Any questions?
I have a question. What is, what is the project that involves all the piping along some of the main roads, like on Atlantic, and it's been along Wayland, and they seem to be moving from place to place?
Yeah, well, that's the slum sewers. But I can get back to you on what the story is of it all.
I just.
I believe it's the, it's not, it's not the town that's doing it. But I can get back to you overall about the project.
I just wondered, because it seems like it's a really, it, it looks like it must be important because they've been working on it all winter, and I.
Well, you know, Argenee's been out there, too. I know they contracted out, and a lot of trees have been trimmed along, any trees that are along power lines and everything like that. A lot of the utility companies have been out in force, you know, so the weather's been good, and they've been out there doing what they need to have done.
I know also Greenlight is laying the fiber optic cables in a lot of the surrounding areas, so a lot of the utility work that's been going on, we had somebody knock on our door the other day and let us know that they were doing, like, tree trimming and things like that, because Greenlight is laying the fiber optic cables.
Now, Greenlight's underground, so I'm not sure about that part of it.
I don't know.
Yeah, they are, they are in Penfield, though. I know, I know my subdivision's been contacted, a lot of, a lot have. It was sort of on Webster and, you know, they, that border, there was some green light, but now they're kind of moving forward into our, into our town, so, so it's a positive for a lot of people.
Linda, what is going in where the apartments are across from the YMCA? Is there, is there retail going in there, or?
Well, that, that's the one that the Episcopal, the Episcopal living is for seniors, for seniors. And, you know, they're little apartments and so on, and there was going to be some retail. I'm not sure if they chose what's going in yet. But, you know, they had this whole idea about, you know, they have some place where everybody can go eat, and then they can walk across the street to the Y and all that. So, yeah, that's really coming, coming along. But, yeah, it, it's for that complex, for the senior living.
Are there any other questions for Linda?
Linda, is there any interest in the, in the Clark House? As far as somebody, my internet connection is unstable.
Yeah, you can kind of read, too, Judy. But no.
I know I'm red. I look like I'm on fire. As well, why I was red.
Judy, I'm fired, yeah. Now, the Clark House, there has been a business invested. But the whole thing is, until certain things are dealt with at the Clark House, the foundation, there's, there's been some issues. It's a really old building, and it has, you know, some issues that I'm sure somebody would, would help, you know, once they're there, but there's things that the town must fix first, so. There's been a, a report put, being put together of all the things that need to be done. We hired somebody to look into that. Yeah. It's, it's not an easy thing, you know? It's some of these old buildings, after a while, you know, they, they need a lot of TLC, and it costs money. But I know we want to keep it as long as we can, because it's historic, you know?
Well, tonight, we are very fortunate to have with us Kim Catalino, who is the adult and large print librarian, and she is going to talk to us about how she makes decisions about what she buys, and how she makes decisions on the programming that she does, and other facets of her job. And we're really looking forward to hearing from you, Kim.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hi. Thank you so much, Barbara, for that introduction, and thank you all for inviting me today. It's great to be here. I'll just give you a tiny bit of background about me, and then I'll launch into what I knew of Penfield. I've been working in the library, it was my very first job, at 16 years old, as a page of the Arundecreek Public Library, and I kind of never left, left the library world in some way, shape, or form. So I love libraries, I've worked in them my whole working life, and I'm so happy to be at Penfield. I started as a sub at Penfield in 1999, and started in my current position in 2016. So been a long time there, seen a lot of changes. It's just such a great place. I love working there. I am the adult fiction librarian, and also in charge of the large print collection, which my predecessor, I have to give her high praise, Lilay Shum, did a fabulous job establishing a great large print collection, and I've tried to follow in her stead and in her footsteps. I select both fiction and nonfiction for large print. And I really do think we have a, have a great collection to serve anyone that needs large print materials. It's a lot of fun, what can I say? If any of you are readers, which I'm sure you all are, how fun is it, right, to get to select materials to purchase? And there, I just jotted down a few of the sources that I use when I'm looking at selections. All of my colleagues use a lot of the same ones, Publishers Weekly, Booklist, Bookmarks, Bookpage, Library Journal, Forecast. We also use Goodreads. There's some selection lists that the vendors, such as Baker &amp; Taylor or Ingram, provide us as well for selection. We are always open to recommendations, so there are recommendations from the public that we get for suggestions on what they might like to see in the collection, so we evaluate those as well. We have what are called standing orders. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but standing orders through our vendors ensure that we have the latest bestsellers on street date. So those automatically come to us. For fiction, we can get two copies of them every time one of them is published, and for large print, just one, because it's a smaller collection. Examples of what might be on the standing order, I'll just mention in first is James Patterson, because he seems to publish a book at least once a month, and there's a huge fan base for James Patterson, so we have to have his. You know, Danielle Steele, John Grisham, I, I mean, just any of the likely New York Times bestsellers, we automatically get those, so we have them in hand. So I never have to really think about that. I will add more if the demand calls for it, so we can get, obviously, more than two copies if we need to, because sometimes the whole lists are quite long. So that's as far as selection goes. Just looking at my notes here. Also in charge of doing displays, as you're probably all aware, when you come into the library, there's various displays for nonfiction, for the DVDs, for the children's area. So I take care of four displays. One is for regular print, adult fiction. It's kind of in the middle of the library toward where the computers are, and before you get to the, before you get to the CDs, but kind of next to the DVDs. So that's a seasonal or topical display. So for instance, for March, it's focusing on Irish authors or novels that are set in Ireland, just for March, for St. Patrick's Day. But those rotate on a monthly basis. Large print pretty much follows suit to what I do for the adult fiction display. Then there's a staff picks display, also in the front of the library, and then a former bestsellers display. And that is, believe it or not, wildly popular. I think a lot of people gravitate toward certain authors that are the perpetual bestsellers, and it's just an easy grab and go for them to kind of revisit some favorite authors. So that, that display does get a lot of use, so it's kept that going. In addition to, there's the new fiction and the new large print that are also kind of front and center in the library, so we make sure that those are refreshed. So those are the displays. For programs, I'm in charge, and I co-host now with Candace Johnson, who's the nonfiction librarian. So we host a monthly book discussion, and I will call out Judy Maranucci. Thank you, Judy, for joining our book discussion via Zoom. We love having you. Anybody, we'd love to see you. It's the third Thursday of the month, so, so look for that. And I will mention that this is the longest continuous book discussion in the Monroe County library system. It was founded over 36 years ago, and has been running continuously since then. So it's a great, solid group, still a core group, but new, new patrons join all the time. I'm so happy that the pandemic and the Zoom world did not put an end to the book discussion. It's kind of, just changed it a little right now, but I think for some patrons, it's given them the opportunity to join, that they may not have had the opportunity to join for transportation issues, or weather issues, or distance issues. So it's been, it's been great. So that's one of the programs. Prior to the pandemic, I was also in charge of the Senior Tea, along with the Penfield Rec Department. That was in-person once a month, where I would present a selection of new fiction and new nonfiction to the group. It hasn't restarted yet in any way, shape, or form, but I'm hopeful that something will be coming to, that's very similar to it, or that we can restart that soon. So that was another program. In addition to all of those duties, I also, you know, have a rotation on the information desk every day, which I, I love. I love seeing the patrons, I love hearing what they're looking for, and I just love helping the patrons. So it's great to have that face-to-face time with the patrons in person. I think I've covered everything. Happy to answer any questions. Talk about anything else you'd like me to.
I just have, I have one question. When people are able to meet together again, are you going to have a hybrid book group where some people are participating by Zoom and other people can be in person, or will it all go back to in-person?
That's a great question, Barbara, and we have discussed that in the librarians' meetings. And I see so many positives to still offering some remote option for patrons. So I think we'd have to look at it technically, like we're doing tonight, how would we do that, and how would it look? And how would it look for people participating in a book discussion format in person and remotely? So I'm completely open to the idea, I think we just have to look at the logistics of it. But it's been a great addition, I think, adding that remote piece to it. So yes, we're open to that, I think we'd have to look at the logistics of how we would do it. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, sure, you're welcome.
Kim, how do you choose new authors that, you know, are now on the market? I mean, bestsellers are always a given, but how do we, where do you look for some, you know, some new authors and promote those new books? I'm just curious.
Sure. Great question, Judy. It was the list that I kind of rattled off in the beginning, so there are a lot of sources that the librarians use, Publishers Weekly, Booklist, Bookmarks, Bookpage, Library Journal, Forecast. So any of those publications, if there are some new and upcoming authors coming out, they will highlight them, you know, pre-publication, very far in advance, so we can watch them, and, you know, keep our eyes on any new and emerging authors. Does that answer your question? So just really the sources? Yeah.
Right.
Also wildly popular with the public is anything that's ever been on Good Morning America, The Today Show, CNN, you know, they mention an author, they pick it for their monthly book club, like Oprah used to do, and, boy, you better have it, and you better have it right away. Which is great, you know? So you always have to keep your eye on popular culture as well, and, and just keep your eyes and ears open at all times. It's fun.
Kim, I have a question.
How often? It does sound fun.
This is Melissa. How often do you have to retire books? With new books always coming in, how do you make room for all of them? Or I guess, what is the criteria to take a book off the shelves?
That's a great question. Thanks for asking that. We have something that, that we use, that's called a dusty book report. It sounds kind of strange, right? Dusty books, there's always a little dust in books. But to answer your question, so, I mean, periodically, it should be yearly, but sometimes it's a little bit sooner or a little bit later, depending how full the shelves are getting. And we would look at that dusty book report, and we would see, what is the circulation on all of these books? If something hasn't gone out, let's say, in three years, four years, five years, six years, it could probably be retired, with some exceptions. You want to keep the classics, you want to keep any books that are kind of rare and out of print, hard to replace. So it's just not a hard and fast rule to immediately discard them if they haven't gone out. But that's where you start looking, if the circulation doesn't warrant them keeping the shelf space. And so then we would go through and discard those, because you're right, every week, month, six months, you know, you have new books constantly flowing in, so where do you put them? So it's constantly monitoring the shelves, you know, to make sure that you do have enough space for those. And that's where we start, is with the dusty book report, to look at the circulation. You also look at condition of the book as well, and if it's not in great condition, you'd retire it, and you might want to replace it, so you'd have to evaluate that, too. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Do we collaborate, have we ever, I guess, collaborated with other libraries on author visits? I know an author visit can be very pricey, but can draw a lot of people in. I don't know if that's a question for you, Kim, or for Bunny. I was just curious.
I can talk a little bit about that, but I'll defer the details to Bunny. There was something, a, a program for many, many years with Writers and Books, where they would collaborate. Does anybody remember that? It's like a Fall of Rochester, Read the Same Book. And, and they would bring, you know, a named author in. Yes, there would be a, a payment for that, but they would go to various libraries or their settings during their book tour through Rochester, and that was wildly popular. Huge turnout for that. And I know that program has changed, and any specifics, I'm going to defer to Bunny to talk more about. But to answer your question, Judy, yes, that that was a longstanding thing that was done post-pandemic. Now, I'm not sure how that's going to look for things.
Right. I don't know.
Yeah, Writers, Writer, Writers and Books has discontinued that. It turned out to be a high investment and low dividend program, I think, for them, in the way they are sort of reforming themselves. They are replacing that with affiliating themselves with the National Endowment for the Humanities, National Endowment for the Humanities, program called Big Read. We've done that, too, in the past, but now Writers and Books is latching on to having that as its substitute for Rochester Reads, or a Fall of Rochester Read the Same Book. So we're going to be participating in that. They have chosen the book, and it's a book of poetry this time by a former, I think she was the poet laureate of the United States, I want to say Harjo, is her last name, and they're planning to roll that out in the fall. Ordinarily, we, this is just exactly the time we, we would be preparing to be doing the collaboration with Writers and Books, but of course, we can't do it in these circumstances, and they've discontinued. So we have that to look forward to in the fall.
Good. Thanks, Bunny. Any other questions? Anything?
I don't think so. Kim, thank you so much for taking your time.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, we're delighted you came, and it really is helping us learn more about the library and some of the functions that we don't really know that well or understand, and it's, it, we really appreciate the glimpse into what goes on behind the scenes.
Oh, I appreciate the time. Thank you so much. Hope to see you all in the library and/or book discussion. Take care, everyone. Thursday, yes, you're right, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
I think we will move on to committee reports. We have done finance. Rachel is not here, so we are going to go with what was in the minutes. Strategic planning, Melissa, did you want to talk about?
Sure, I have an update on our community survey that.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, I'm supposed to be covering for Rachel.
Oh, good.
With this, because we need to, I think, vote on this tonight, if people are ready, or make amendments.
We, we present things at one meeting, and then we vote on them the next.
I thought she sent this out. Did everyone receive?
Did everyone receive the employee satisfaction survey?
I did not.
I did not.
Okay. I thought that it was sent out. I might be mistaken. Then I guess we will have to send this out, and we'll have to go on next week, next meeting. Sorry, next meeting.
See, that's the problem. It wasn't sent out. So it gets presented next time, and we can vote the month after.
Okay, so we will...
That's, that's...
Okay.
That is, that is the policy.
Okay, so that is on hold right now.
So...
Sorry about that. For some reason, she emailed me saying I had to cover it.
Well, that is okay.
All right.
You're on the committee, so... We will move on. Now strategic planning.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So Megan and Judy and I have been working on the community survey the past two weeks. And we've got it narrowed down to about 12 questions and just sort of finalized our draft of it last night. And we didn't think it was fair to send it to you with a day's notice to review for today. So we will send that out to you tonight, right after the meeting. And we're hoping everyone can provide feedback in the next week or so so that we can get it to Bunny to review with her staff and get us feedback so we can talk about it or vote on it at our next meeting.
We can talk about it at our next meeting. We won't be able to vote until the month after. That's why I was hoping we could have it today. Because if it were presented, then we could do all of this and then vote next month.
Okay.
But that's okay. Well, it'll get done.
Okay. The only other thing, we already covered it, was the sign that that's moving forward, the exterior sign. So if you actually go to the library, you'll see Barbara and I met with sign language and staked out where the sign will go. So you'll see two wooden stakes out front near the flagpole. And that's the proposed location. So, but no other updates there. We're just waiting to hear from them, I think, on the status of things.
Yeah. And they were going to, they said it would take how long before they could be there and put it in?
I think it was mid to late April was when they estimated it being close to being finished. So when the weather warms up a little bit.
Yeah. That would be, that'll be great. Well, that'll be something to look forward to in the spring.
Okay.
It's beautiful. Bylaws and policy. Megan, you have something that we sent out today?
Yes, so today we sent out a draft policy for employee identification badges. It's a relatively basic policy. It's heavily based on what the Rochester Public Library system uses. So again, all full-time and part-time staff persons will have a staff identification card that they will be expected to wear that will be visible at all times. The pages will not be expected to do that because they are minors. So for safety reasons. We're not going to ask them to do that. But it is in there that it will be the responsibility of the supervisors to ensure that it's worn and that it needs to be visible at all times. So if there are, I know Niraj got back, but if there are any, you know, thoughts or feedback on any modifications that need to be made to that. But otherwise, we should be good next month then to vote on that policy.
Very good. And if anybody has any comments or suggestions, please share them with Megan.
Yes, you should all have my email address from the thread where it went out. So any revisions or anything that need to be made, just let me know.
And communications and advocacy, is there anything?
We don't have any update besides everyone. Thank you if you shared the social media posts for Advocacy Day last month. I know it was a really good, it was very successful for them. They had a lot of social media hits. And thank you all for doing that.
That was a very cute picture of all of us.
Yeah.
I was not really sure how I thought that was going to work out. But I actually thought that was a very nice photo of all of us.
I thought it was, too. And I was surprised, I put it up on Facebook, and I was surprised at how many people from all around the country said, oh, I like that.
I think it was creative. So thank you all for participating.
Idea. That was, that was great.
Barbara, could you, could you talk into your microphone? I can't hear you when you turn away.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just said it was nice that it worked out so well. It was a wonderful photo. And it was a great idea, thanks to Denise and Jennifer.
Thank you.
And now Bunny, it's time for your director's report. Bunny, is your microphone on?
We got word earlier this week that the website is going live on Friday or maybe Monday. So that's something to look forward to. I just want to remind everybody that National Library Week is April 4th through 10th. I have sent Tony a proclamation to unveil at the, it'll probably be that first legislative meeting in April. I think it's at April 6th. So I haven't heard back that he's going to do that, but I assume he will. He's usually really good when I send him something like that. And I just want to bring to the board's attention that a longtime former trustee and past president of the Board of Trustees, Mary Ellen Collinge, died last week. Her daughter called me the day she died. She was a very big supporter and cheerleader for the library, and she will be missed. She was a dedicated library user and booster. So that's going to be a big gap in our support to lose Mary Ellen. I also want to remind you that in the director's report, I mentioned that the annual state report was ready for approval. I put it in Dropbox. Because it's so large, it would have been an awful lot to send each of you a copy via email. I don't know if your emails could have accepted it. But if you've had a chance to peruse that, I would appreciate an approval of that so I can get it submitted in plenty of time to meet our April 1st deadline for this year.
Has everybody looked it over? And I know Niraj made a note that he had looked it over as well. Would someone like to make a motion that we approve that?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Is there a second? Thanks. All in favor? Raise your hand, please. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, that's great. I can submit that tomorrow then. Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for a thorough job. Are you, are you ready for questions?
Are you talking to me, Barbara?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yes, of course.
I was wondering where you said you were coordinating with the rec department about opening, coordinating the open hours. When do you think that might be? And how will that, will that work? And will we still have the gentleman in the hallway doing the contact tracing?
For the, for the time being, they are planning to keep the guard in the hallway. He was there mostly to protect the library end of the community center. He wasn't there for the library. He was there for the community center. And the rec department was taking care of their end of the community center. But as they expand their offerings and they expect more visitation, they think it's going to become too much, not only in volume, but in the time they need to cover the other end of the building for them to take care of the contact tracing at that end of the building. So they are looking to have the guards take care of both the visitors for the library and the recreation center. I discussed the expanded, the potentially expanded hours of rec department offerings with the staff. The staff is still a little bit leery about moving too quickly to change our hours. So for the time being, we are going to keep our, the hours as we have them now. And we'll be revisiting that in about a month. And we'll just see what the community situation is as far as COVID.
It sounds sensible.
Bunny, in your last, in last month's report, you said that there were people that were relaxing the mask protocol when they come in the library. Are you still, is that still an issue? Or people are just feeling more comfortable and think they don't need a mask?
It's no worse, Judy, than it was last month. But we still get people who are thinking, as they sit down, it's okay to remove them. We get people who are moving furniture around to share tables where it's clearly marked one person at this table, and there really isn't furniture for them to do that. They're really being creative about moving furniture around. So we try to be vigilant about that. We are still very serious about mask wearing. The staff, of course, is always masked. So we require all patrons over the age of two have a mask on. And whenever we see that, we remind the people. And there is the implicit threat that, you know, that one of the conditions of using the library is being masked and observing all the protocols. And they are pretty much compliant when they, they're reminded about it. A lot of the times, it's, they're kind of forgetting about things. And they're relaxing and removing their masks. And when we remind them, they say, oh, oh, I'm sorry. And they put it right back up. And so we're not really getting, once we remind people, we're not getting an awful lot of pushback on that. But we're not relaxing either. It's, we still have all the same stringent protocols in place.
Just curious. Thank you.
Bunny, I had a question about the last bullet point where you said one of the circulation desk staff is taking a course and is examining library communications, which sounds really exciting. I just was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more on like what kind of communications? Is it internal, external? Kind of what he's looking at and what that's going to look like?
What he is looking at is his project. And it's, he's still in the process of finalizing the project with his professor so that we can go ahead and begin rolling it out in staff in the library. Is trying to put a positive spin on communications we have. And that would be within the library, even to the point of things like closing announcements. So rather than saying something like the library is closing in 10 minutes, we say something like the library will be open for 10 more minutes. Just spinning our communications a little bit to express them in a more positive way. And that would be written communications that we're sending out, anything that we have on the website, our social media, any, our newsletters, anything like that. I'm sorry, I don't know any more details. We're supposed to meet next week and finalize a little bit about the specifics of the project as he wants it to go forward. But that's what we're, we're planning on doing going forward with this project.
Okay.
Does that, does that help?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And I certainly understand, obviously, if he's still finalizing it. But I mean, I think that sounds like a great opportunity for the library. I think that's great that he's able to incorporate that with his coursework. And then this is not a question so much. I just wanted to comment, kudos to you, Bunny, because with the temporarily taking the Dr. Seuss books in question off the shelves, it never even occurred to me that theft might be a possible concern. And when you sent the initial email, I went onto Amazon. And sure enough, they're selling for $800, $900 right now. So I just kind of wanted to say that I think that was great that, you know, as a library, we were able to proactively, you know, look and say, we're not even going to wade into yes or no. But, you know, certainly for, you know, the purpose of protecting library property, I think that makes a lot of sense right now. So kudos for that foresight.
Yeah, thank...
Oh, I'm sorry, Bernie, Bunny. I was just wondering, do we have any of them out? Are they still, are there any out that are still out there for distribution? Or did, were we able to pull them all?
No, we weren't able to pull them all. They had, some of them were actually out in circulation. So, so much for those not being the most popular Dr. Seuss books. They were circulating, but not a lot of copies of those. And we put, we put holds on them. And as they return from circulation, we'll snag them.
Bunny, I have one quick question. This is Jennifer.
So it said something about destroying them? Did I read it correctly? Oops, sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead. Finish it. You're on the same topic.
Was the comment that said something about destroying them? Is that, are we really, are they really thinking of destroying them? Or is it just a verbiage that they're using to get them away, get them off of the outer circulation?
That came from Dr. Seuss Enterprises, which is the governing body that controls the estate of Dr. Seuss and protects his intellectual property rights with those. That was language that came from them. We're certainly not considering that. Most libraries are not going to be going to those lengths. They may withdraw them from circulation and put them in storage and wait for people to request them before they circulate them again. Or they might deaccession them. But I don't think most libraries are going to destroy them. We are not.
Jennifer?
Okay.
Bunny?
I didn't think we were, it was the...
The delay.
I think Jennifer has a question.
I interrupted someone.
Oh, you're fine. Hi, Bunny, this is Jennifer. I was just wondering, with the change in the children's librarians this spring, are they considering anything different for the summer reading program? I know that it's usually such a large event for the children's section. So I was just curious of, with COVID and with the two new staff members, if they have anything different planned?
A lot of the planning for summer reading, summer reading planning takes place almost as soon as summer reading is over. So the summer reading has been in the plan. And we have usually the theme we know about a year at least in advance, sometimes multiple years. So they were already planning for summer reading after last year's summer reading. We're probably more influenced in any changes you'll see because of COVID and having to do, again, this summer, more things virtually than they wish they had to do than by any change in personnel here. I think it'll take another year before we see the influence of the new children's librarians. Excuse me. One really cool thing that Julie, our new children's librarian, showed me is a little bit of a change in the game board that everybody's used to seeing for the summer reading game. It's usually one single board that's played throughout the whole summer reading season. And this time, it is, summer reading lasts for six weeks. It is broken down into six smaller game boards. Each of the theme having a kind of a unified theme for that week that is in keeping with the theme for the whole summer reading, which is Tales for Tales this year. Very cute board that each child will play for a week. Six, six different littler boards that they will play. And that's a change you might notice. But I think that's, that's a nice change, a fun change. And other than that, the general presentation that we do won't change all that much for this summer, anyway.
Thank you. I should have known that they would be on top of things.
Bunny, earlier you mentioned that you had talked with the staff at a staff meeting about how to... about how to switch the hours. And I wanted to offer that the board would like to attend the staff meetings. If you could tell us when they are, we would like to come up with the schedule and share that with you. So there's always one or two board members at each staff meeting.
We have staff meetings usually Wednesday morning at 9:30. There's, the first Wednesday of every month, we do not, because that's when I have to attend director's council, and I like to be at the staff meetings. That's usually when our staff meetings are.
So you're having one tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have to see if anybody has a chance to go tomorrow morning. Otherwise, we will start the week after.
We won't be having one the week after for reasons I am not allowed to talk about here. Because it will, it will ruin something.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll, we will, we'll send you an email if somebody can be there tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Bunny? No. Okay. Under new business, Bunny and I, members of the foundation, Tony, the town attorney, and Barbara Chirdo from the finance office met to talk about donations, and we came to some decisions. But one of the topics that came up at that meeting was the fact that we have $166,000 in our gifted memorial fund. And Tony suggested that we should have a spending plan in mind, because if we did not spend our money, we ran the risk of having the state of New York step in and decide that they could help us spend. And he said, "We would probably rather spend it ourselves." And I don't expect people to have ideas tonight. I've talked about this with Bunny. She has a couple of suggestions. But I would like each of us to think about things that we could do. And things that would make a difference to the patrons of the library. And that's a pretty broad statement. It could be... And I will tell you, I mentioned this to Naraj, and Naraj's suggestion was a restroom inside the library.
I was thinking that he would have said that.
So you, nothing is really off the table. We would have to figure out how much things are. None of us are architects or builders, so we cannot look at something and say, "Oh, that's too much," or "That's not going to be very much at all." It'll just be $5,000 to put in a new bathroom. We have no clue. So we would have to have somebody come in and work with us. If there's something that has to do with operations, we'll have to have Bunny get someone to give us a cost on that. So we're, but I think we should think about things that we really feel will make a difference. And I also think that if we have a plan and we spend part of it, we'll be okay, as long as we can say, "And we're planning to do this, this, and this." And we have, and we have that, and we've voted on, and so forth. Which leads me back to the policy that Naraj was highlighting, and that is the one that says, "Oh, we need to have, maintain $140,000 or more in the gifted memorial account." It's not a problem right now, but at some point, if we start spending our money, we're going to have to revise that policy.
Okay.
So I think, Megan, your, your committee might want to look at how we can word that. But I don't think we want to spend it all this year. I don't think that would, I don't think that would be a smart thing to do.
So that's not a bank minimum that we have to have? That is a committee, like, our policy?
That is our policy that the board, that a previous Board of Trustees passed. And the reason that they passed it was so that there would be a certain level of income coming in every quarter.
Oh.
And when they did, the interest rates were much higher than they are today. And now with the foundation, we don't have that same pressure to keep our endowment up and have a certain amount of money coming in every month or every quarter. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So since the money was given to the library, we need to come up with some things that will really make life better. And if any patrons are watching this and you have suggestions, please email us at ppltrustees@yahoo.com, because we would welcome your opinions also.
So Barbara, is that something that you want us to, you know, come up with and send to you? Or should we just be prepared at the next meeting to discuss?
I think we should. You can send them to me if you want to, but if you have a brainstorm before, on your way to the meeting, that would be fine to discuss them.
Okay.
And I think I will see if we could move the whiteboard up here, and we could probably make a list that would be visible on camera, and people could see it, and go from there and, you know, take a survey, see which, which ideas, maybe pick the top three, and then do a cost analysis and see how much we can afford, or, and so forth. So.
All right. Okay.
So unfinished business. Bunny addressed the Nyla membership in her report, and we have the exterior sign. We are ready for claims.
Barbara?
Yes?
Excuse me. Can there be a motion to write a check to the foundation for the $33.25 that was from the Amazon Smile account? It's in the family first statement for February?
Yes, we can do that. Is anybody willing?
Please. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
Megan? And then you can second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of doing a check? Raise your hand. Yes.
May I ask who seconded the motion?
Denise.
Denise.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion is passed.
Thank you very much.
And Brett, this is your first time as the auditor for us. Would you like to talk about the financial statement and make the motion?
Yeah. With Gail's help, I was able to complete the audit for this month. And I would like to create a motion to approve the vouchers that are submitted in the amounts of $15,021.50.
Would someone like to second that? Melissa? Thank you. Okay. All in favor? A unanimous vote again. Thank you very much. And thank you, Brett.
You're welcome. Gail made it easy. Thank you, Gail.
Oh, anytime.
Well, anytime until the end of the month.
Right.
Yeah, you gotta move fast.
And the next auditor is going to be Judy.
Yes.
Yes. You might want to stop in and see Gail before the end of the month, just to have her walk you through the process.
If you're back in...
I would love to do that.
Okay.
I will not be back in time.
Okay.
So...
I'm sure we can.
I'm sorry. I, that...
Are you...
And Bunny?
You're not going to be back?
Bunny, I guess you're on.
He can show you.
We will, we will be, yeah, we will be back by the 6th of April. So.
So you'll be back for the meeting, but not to work with Gail. Okay.
Correct.
Then you can still do the vouchers, and one of us will be happy to help you.
I can help you, Judy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bunny.
That concludes our business this evening. Do we have a motion to, oh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Yes. Jennifer, is there a second? Brett, thank you very much. All in favor, signified by saying, raising your hand. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned.